The chair notes the time is six oh two. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, ZBA Chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty eight and Article ten, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw. This public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one and extended by chapter twenty two of the Acts of twenty twenty two. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately view the proceedings in real time via technological means. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. We will begin with a roll call of ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Ms. Tammy Parks?
Here.
Mr. Dylan Maxfield?
Here.
Mr. Craig Meadows, I know he's trying to um call in. We'll acknowledge that. Mr. Gilbert?
Present.
I also want to note the presence of our associate member Sarah Marshall, who will be in panel for the next matter. Also in attendance tonight is Ms. Maureen Pollock, planner with the town of Amherst. And I think later Rob Mora, the building commissioner, will also be in attendance. Tonight's agenda, a public meeting on ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash eleven, North Square at Mill District. Request a review of the proposed alterations to the site and the building and to determine the changes to be considered insubstantial as they relate to the previously approved comprehensive permit decision, ZBA FY twenty seventeen dash zero seven for the site and building B in order to allow the commercial retail uses of proposed class one restaurant with seasonal outdoor dining and a proposed bakery located at seventy five eighty five Cowles Road, map five A parcel one thirty nine, Commercial COM zoning district. A public hearing on ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash zero four, Redwood Construction, Inc. Request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash twenty one for proposed modifications to conditions one, six, eleven, twelve, nineteen, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty five, twenty eight, among possible others as they relate to the proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities, building plans and management plan under section ten point three three and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw located at Renew Amherst two six, two sixty six, East Hadley Road, map sixteen D parcel thirteen, neighborhood residential RN zoning district. This is continued from our November tenth, twenty twenty two meeting. After that, general public comment period on matters not before the board tonight. Other business and then other business not anticipated within forty eight hours. First order of business tonight is ZBA. Well, I want to note the presence of Mr. Meadows for the roll call. So we have all members of the panel in attendance. The first order of business tonight is ZBA twenty twenty three dash eleven. North Square at Mill District request review of proposed alterations to the site and building and to determine changes to be considered insubstantial as they relate to the previously approved comprehensive permit decision, ZBA FY twenty seventeen dash zero seven for the site and building B in order that the commercial retail uses of the proposed class one restaurant with seasonal outdoor dining and proposed bakery located at seventy five eighty five Cowles Road, map five A parcel one thirty nine, Commercial COM zoning district. Panel for the consideration of ZBA twenty twenty three dash eleven is myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Mr. Meadows and Mr. Gilbert. We had a site visit on Tuesday, the thirteenth. At that site visit, we we saw the the two proposed business locations in the building. We we observed the interior under construction and the plans. We talked with the architect of the and the manager regarding those plans. We saw the changes to the sidewalk in front and the and the front of the coffee shop signage change. We saw the, we went out and observed the ADA compliant ramp into the back exit. We noted the slope of the front entrance ramp and we also noted that the floor at the front entrance, the floor on the bakery would be raised so that there would not be a step down, I think, into the the bakery premises. Other than that, we walked around the premises, made observations. But our our site visit was mostly to review. Oh, and we also looked at the trellis, the lighting and the changes that may have to be made to the trellis to accommodate the security camera. I think that's pretty much it for the site visit. If there's anything else that members on the site visit wish to note. This is the time to do so. All right. In terms of submissions, we have a submission which is an email to me from WD Coles, Inc., and signed by Arthur Haskins, Director of Real Estate and Community Development at the Coles Company. This includes a request for the approval of insubstantial changes, a management plan, several drawings of the both site plans, interior as well as external drawings. It includes a management plan. Includes, excuse me, a approval under Article fourteen. Additional management plan from the bakery, some stock photos submitted of chairs, includes the front of the the building, which is the page A three, page A three point one is a bird's eye view of the bakery. Page A third three point two, I know, again, a site plan as well as elevation. Eight point three, A three point three includes more detailed drawings, management plan for the restaurant. Futura, it's the draft Futura menu, but it's a draft of the coffee shop. It shows the trellis, the banquet, the banquet seats, exterior chairs, a light, an example of the lighting proposed for the signage and some and some tables as well as additional renderings, A two and A two point one, which are both elevations as well as a bird's eye view of the of the proposed build out as well as A two and A two point three again. Elevations and site plans of the build out. I think there's additional material that will be provided by the applicant tonight as well, shown on the screens. That is the exact extent of the submissions that I have. I don't think there's anything else. What I'd like to do is determine who is representing the applicant at this point and have them make a presentation. But whoever that is, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Haskins. I work for WD Coles as the Director of Real Estate and Community Development. Thank you for your time this evening. I managed the lease up residential lease up of North Square from two thousand eighteen preconstruction to two thousand twenty one where residential occupancy reached our full capacity. And in November of twenty twenty one, I joined WD Coles as Director of Real Estate. Today, as representative of the commercial units owners at North Square WD Coles, we'd like to request the approval of the insubstantial changes you mentioned. Are looking, as you mentioned, for two tenants. We have two prospective tenants, Futura Coffee Roasters Cafe or Genetra Agriculture. A cafe that is a Bertha style offering with a seating capacity of forty nine people. And that would be at the address of seventy three Coles Road unit. And directly next door is the Carefree Cakery, which is the bakery you've mentioned, which is a fair trade bakery specializing in celebration cakes to be located at seventy one. The exterior changes proposed as described in earlier is the timber trellis, outdoor seating placement and and the ADA access room to be installed at the second emergency egress at the back of the seventy five Coles Road overall North Square building. If I may share my screen, I have a elevation depiction to help illustrate what I'm looking to describe.
Yes. Please do, Mr. Haskins.
Kindly bear with me. Are you able to see my photograph of the seventy three and seventy one Coles Road units?
Yes.
This is where the first proposed changes would occur today. Are you able to see my mouse cursor?
Yep.
We are proposing a timber trellis to be located over the primary egress of this unit, which is thirty three Coles Road. With this timber trellis underneath would be bank, banquet seating, a table and chairs as depicted in this image. Are you able to see the artist's computer rendering of the same location with those items placed?
Yes, we are.
If I may note, I did not have this in time for the meeting today, but there is a camera that is located at the corner of this unit. And there is a note to design the timber trellis in a way that will not impede the view of the camera angles. So these tails, this trellis would be brought in just enough not to impede the view. And to illustrate, I'll just show you what that corner camera is typically looking at. This is just a capture on a random day of what camera angles are viewed from that from that location. And again, this is the camera that I'm talking. So back to the rendering. This is the the depiction of the trellis. The coloring is depicted as accurate as possible for the material being a cedar or natural material. And as noted in your earlier description, I also do have renderings of the banquet seating proposed, the proposed chairs and tables designs as well. May I answer in so far?
There any questions from members of the board? Okay, I guess. Oh, Ms. Parks.
Where will the the sign go? The signage go? Is it above or below the trellis?
It is to be located below the trellis so that it is best viewed from eye level, typical eye level standing at the ground. Kindly bear with me while I zoom in to the Kuhn Riddle Architect elevation rendering depicting the Futura Coffee Roasters signage.
Okay, I see.
Yes.
Thank you.
To further illustrate, if I may, I just have one other photo that I had prepared available to show depicting present day North Square seventy five Coles Road. And today, out of frame is our Mill District General Store and Local Art Gallery that were our first businesses. Our North Square Property Management Office, this this entire development continues to be maintained by Beacon Residential Management or or Maintenance. We have today a charcuterie business, the North Amherst Public Library's temporary location, a clothing retailer, The Closet, a Pilates instructor, Balanced Birch. And then this is the location of the Futura Coffee Roasters and then Carefree Cakery that we were discussing.
Mr. Haskins, can you give us also a view of the or a rendering of what the sign would look like for the coffee roasters? I think it's a loom.
I I have this artistic elevate elevation of as depicted on the architectural plans. And the idea is we've approached a sign company that would have a soft backlighting in light emitting diode backlighting, low voltage would be behind the signage. And I have an example of what that typically looks like if you can see my screen. And that would be tied into our high efficiency lighting systems to control illumination and to control evening hours automatic schedules for on and off as well.
Thank you. It looks like there's no further questions about the coffee roaster. Do you want to move on to the cakery?
So the cakery was approved via Article fourteen previously, and it is located right next door to the seventy three Coles Road unit at unit seventy one. This is a fair trade bakery that specializes in celebration cakes with a front customer facing area, total capacity of just ten. So this unit does not require the ADA egress. This one only requires, I'm sorry, this unit does not require the second egress that has the ADA ramp. However, we can go back to the Futura floor plan that depicts the path out to the second emergency egress ADA ramp. That would be the the third change that we are proposing as well. So kindly take note first of the Carefree Cakery floor plan. This is something that is not easily seen on these these drawings, but as you saw in person the other day when when viewing and touring the location where these are proposed. Nation elevation height, top of nation difference between the and the cafe where the cafe is approximately four, three, three to four feet higher than the the bakery. And so to negate some of that height difference, as you noted as well, the front egress door is a step down. However, we are raising the floor using web trusses to create a level surface direct egress from the street level in level within the cakery once built. In that ramp, there's less of a drop to have to to have to address with the ADA ramp for Futura as it proceeds next to this unit to restrooms that actually are drawn into the cakery depiction. So you can actually see how that coincides with with the bakery. So these are separate spaces. However, we do have a door allowing access. It only made sense to allow in design a a second access at the back of the the cakery kitchen to the hallway, which would allow the business owner use of this this back entrance as well for emergencies or perhaps for occasional deliveries that may require going through this path, but I don't perceive much use other than typically for perhaps emergencies. I may switch back to the Futura Cafe floor plan depiction. That way I can show you in more detail the ADA ramp that's proposed. Bear with me as I zoom. So if I can walk you through this plan, just so that it makes sense. What I had shown you previously with the elevations is the trellis area with the seating here where my cursor is, if you can see it. This would be the primary entrance where cafe patrons would be entering. There is ability to go down this ramp to to ADA bathrooms that would be located at the back of the space as part of this now part of the seventy three use it for the ADA bathrooms and a break room, storage room area. With this forty nine seating capacity, we we need to maximize the capacity so that it made sense for the the tenants. And previous designs, we had played with the idea of placing both the required ADA bathrooms on the space above. However, in order to increase capacity, this turned out to be a great solution suggested by the tenants and drawn by the architects. And this also allows us to reach this required second form of egress. Today, the second egress area has a set of stairs, but no ramp. And were to be compliant, we do need to include an ADA ramp, which is designed compliant with the Mass Architectural Access Board of one twelfth slope or eight point three percent. It indicates the nineteen foot distance for of a ramp that does not exist today that we're
Hope you're breaking up, Mr. Haskins.
Um, I was just noting the 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 ramp area again.
And you said that that's, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make, you said that's a eight point eight and a half degree slope to that ramp?
Eight point three.
Eight point three, and that does meet with ADA requirements?
Um, yes, I actually confirmed that with our architect at Kuhn Riddle. That's a one slope or eight point three percent.
Okay. And the front door is level, right, for ADA?
Correct, yes. That one already is at at the block level.
Yeah, okay. I just have one question, Mr. Haskins, and that was for the, just reconfirmed to me that the entrance to the front of the cakery is at level. Is that correct?
It is, it will be. That's correct. It will be.
Yeah, it will be by raising the floor.
Yes, today it's a sixteen inch difference in height, which we are going to be raising the floor trusses and
And then the other thing is that I know it's not required, or you said it's not required to have a second entrance when the when the occupancy is so low. But in order, if it had, if disabled person or wheelchair bound person had to use the back entrance, they would proceed through the kitchen out through that towards the public restrooms and out towards the ramp. Is that right?
It is correct. The
And it's wide enough to do that. There's enough clearance for a wheelchair. All right. Okay. All right. Are there other questions? And Mr. Haskins, do you have anything else you want to present?
Um, I do not.
Members of the board, do you have any questions? I guess not. This is a public meeting and our our task here is really to decide if make a determination that the requested changes from the applicant are insubstantial and can be approved by the building commissioner, and there's no need for a public hearing on these changes. So we're just reviewing the outdoor changes. The trellis, the outdoor seating, the ADA ramp and the commercial signage. Are there any questions from members of the board or any discussion regarding that before we have a vote to approve the applicant's request for insubstantial changes? To determine these is changes as insubstantial. If there's no, Mr. Maxfield?
I was just gonna say, as long as we're we're just doing discussion before a vote.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, I I certainly think this meets the threshold, seems relatively insubstantial to the comprehensive permit that we've that the this board has already issued. So I'm I'm in favor of voting for this.
So I'd entertain a motion that to approve the requested changes to the comprehensive permit as insubstantial changes. And since this is not a not, we're not determine making an decision on a special permit itself, which just requires three votes, a simple majority. So do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got two seconds. Mr. Meadows and Ms. Parks on a tie. If any further discussion. If there's no further discussion, this is a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous vote. Mr. Haskins, congratulations. You have your insubstant, you have your insubstantial changes.
Much appreciated. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
You bet. The next order of business is the continued public hearing on ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash eleven, North Square at, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash zero four, Redwood Construction, Inc. Request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash twenty one for the proposed modifications to conditions one, six, eleven, twelve, nineteen, condition four, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty five, twenty eight, among possible others as they relate to the proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities, building plans and management plan under section ten point three three and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw located at Renew Amherst two sixty six, East Hadley Road, map sixteen D parcel thirteen, neighborhood residence RN zoning district. This is continued from our November tenth, twenty twenty two meeting. We had, we've already done the, we've had a site visit and we've already reported on that. For this matter, Mrs. Marshall will be in panel and Mr. Meadows has was was not on this panel. On submission since our last meetings, we have an Mr. White has an email of twelve one, which we, which is in your packet, an email from the police chief Livingston on twelve five and twelve seventeen. We have a project application report submitted by staff. And today we received a letter signed by numerous tenants in the project that has also been submitted. We've, this is, I think, our fourth hearing on this matter. We have just a few matters left to consider on this application. They are designating parking, they are the conditions that we have determined. Designating parking spaces, lot coverage number, length of visit of overnight visitors, length and number of 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 visitor of overnight visitors, security, community gardens, tenant access to the new community rooms and a few other more technical conditions that are on that are on our plate tonight. So I'd like to proceed with these remaining conditions after we can consider the conditions and decide whether to apply them. We will then proceed to consider the findings under nine point two two and ten point three eight of the bylaw and then make a decision as to whether to approve this amendment to the special permit. So the first, I'm going to run through those conditions and I'd like to use the undetermined conditions or open conditions as sort of a an agenda for us tonight. The first one is designating parking spaces. I think that's condition the forty, yeah, condition forty seven. I thought at our last meeting, I think this condition we, the applicant was just going to make sure that they that they were okay with it. And they were going to get back to us. I think we didn't make a decision on the parking. But this seems to me this is all consistent with what we had been discussing before. The five ADA compliant parking stalls are marked on the ground with signage and there's one EV station that should be designated and clearly marked in the ground with signage. I think that is I I don't remember an objection from the applicant on that. Am I correct, Mr. Reed? And Mr. White?
Go ahead, Tyler.
Good with that.
No objection there.
Yep. So what I like to do is unless there's objection from any member on the on the board, consider this condition adopted. We're going to adopt all the conditions in a single vote later on, but we'll move forward considering this one is adopted. The next condition, I think, deals The next condition, I think, deals with lot coverage. And that's where you wanted to go from thirty-five point one or two percent to thirty-five point three percent, which is, I think, exactly what you need under current, um, lot cover, under current drawing submitted, but the question was whether the bike racks caused you to have to go a little bit higher. And so I wondered if the applicant had any more thoughts on whether thirty-three point, thirty-five point three is sufficient, gives you sufficient room to, uh, to complete all your business as planned.
Um, Maureen, is, is Carlos on that you can promote him? I think he might, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any issues with this one, but, I don't know, if, he should be on, he could speak to any kind of, he's not, I can, he told me he would be available, um, but I, from, um, from my understanding, and Carlos can speak to more technical aspect when he hops on, but, um, you know, I, you're, you're correct in that the, the additional, um, the additional lot coverage, uh, or the increased proposed lot coverage is because of the, the pads for the bike racks, um, and, and some of the other minor changes that we made. Um, and I, I, I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but I know that is just a, a, a minor increase to what was approved before, I think, point two or point three.
Yes, it was point two, I think, before, and this went to point three, and this is Carlos's number, so we took it from him. If I have it correct, okay.
Yep.
If there's no object, if there's no objection from other board members, I'd like to have this one considered approved, and we'll vote it as part of the whole package at the end, all right? The next one is, um, the maximum number of overnight visitors per unit currently reads ten people with a maximum stay of five consecutive nights. Um, this is, and typically what we do is leave this up to the, um, the, the, the landowner or the, the management company to decide what it is, unless it's outrageous, you know, unless it's an outrageously high number. Um, and they let them decide how they wish to manage it. Is this, is this the number in your lease? And is this the number that you're comfortable with continuing having?
Yes, yes, to both of those, um, our, our lease has been updated to include that, uh, language. And so we're, we're comfortable with that, with that number.
And ten could be a large number of people. My view is a ten is a large number of people on a day-to-day basis. But if you have family coming in for, for holidays, is that why the number is, is ten? In case you have a two-bedroom apartment, you have family coming in, is that what you're looking at there? Is this larger than you normally see? Yeah?
Correct, I mean, I think that's, you know, that's certainly, uh, um, a good example, when that number could reach, uh, uh, that, or when the, when the visitors could reach that number. Um, those numbers did originally come from the currently approved special permit, which requires us to update the, the lease agreement, so, um, that number was generated mainly from the special permit. Um, but you're, you're correct in, in that examples, you know, uh, in a case where family comes in for the holidays, you know, and the, in the stipulation that it's only five days maximum, um, kind of helps to mitigate any concerns with too many visitors.
Is there any discussion from members of the board regarding this condition? All right, if not, um, without objection, I'd like to have this one be considered as approved, and we'll vote on it as part of the whole package. The next is, um, condition seventy-five dealing with security. That's where most of our discussion last week was. The app, um, Mr. White and Mr. Reed, you had sent a proposal to the staff, um, on December first, which, um, asked, which said, the owner shall install one security camera at each door. Uh, let's see, no, review the aforementioned, blah, blah, blah. Um, we find your exact language to, to the, um, here we go. Your proposal was to install one security camera per building within ninety days of the approved special permit modification. Two, immediately after the board's approval, the owner or its management will have regular check-ins with the police department to discuss property safety and security. Uh, three, onsite security will provided by, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from nine to three, when the new forty-seven unit building achieves eighty percent occupancy. Four, review the need for onsite security to occur six months after convention. I think that's yours.
Yes.
Yes, review the need for onsite security to occur six months after the commencement of onsite security. The ZBA will defer to the police department as to whether onsite security is necessary going forward. Um, that was your proposal, uh, that was then, the staff shared that with the chief of police and Captain Ting. The response from Captain Ting is securities cameras should be installed at entrance and exits. And after the initial request for security Thursday through Saturday, as per previous email, I'm good with revisiting the requests after a six-month timeframe in coordination with inspection services. So, um, I guess there's a couple of issues that I see, uh, for the benefit of the board here. One is, um, whether we have just one security camera per building or every entrance and exit is, um, has a security camera. Uh, and the second issue that I have is the wording of the, um, the wording of the last portion, number D, where we, quote-unquote, defer our, um, how is it stated, defer to the police department as to whether onsite security is necessary going forward. I would rather the language say something to the effect that the, the police department will, will determine, um, whether onsite, uh, further, um, measures for onsite security, um, in the future. And not have ZBA deferring to them, but just flat-out empower the police department to do this. Um, Rob, is, is that?
I, I, uh, sorry, uh, uh, don't forget your question for Rob, but, uh, if you wouldn't mind referring to pages forty-four and forty-five of the project application report, that, that is the, uh, the sort of, uh,
Yeah.
The, um, suggested condition, um, so I just, I want you to be referring to the correct, um, or updated, uh.
Yeah, the updated is, condition seventy-five, page forty-four and forty-five. Um, owner will install one secure, so what you're suggesting is, but in brief, it's having to, um, the board's approval, it's the same manageable check-in with the Amherst Police Department, if we have regular check-ins, and the purpose of discussing property and security, property, safety and security. Onsite security provided Thursday, Friday, Saturday, nine to three, when the new forty-seven unit building achieves eighty percent occupancy, and review of the need for onsite security shall occur every six months after the commencement, commencement of the pro, of provided onsite security. ZBA shall defer to the Amherst Chief of Police on whether onsite security is continued, suspended, or reinstated any time after the initial six-month period, the applicant should notify inspection services anytime there is a change in onsite security. I would prefer that language to be something to the effect that the, um, police, the police chief, or, or the Amherst Chief of Police, they want that, or they want the police department, Maureen? What's their, do they care about the, who specifically is mentioned? Chief of police or police department?
We don't, it looked like the chief wanted the, the chief, but it's immaterial.
Whatever the chief, what the chief, whatever the police. Yeah, so Rob, what I, my question was, can we get language that says ZBA, that the Amherst Chief of Police shall be, um, shall determine whether onsite security is to be continued, suspended, or reinstated at, at any time after the initial six-month period? Dot, 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 as opposed to the ZBA shall defer to the Amherst Chief of Police. Let's just change that, I would like to move to change that condition to the Amherst Chief of Police shall determine whether onsite. Does that work?
It's okay.
Yeah. All right. All right, we're gonna do that. And insert shell. And delete ZBA shall defer to, all right. So we have the general outlines, two questions exist from the last meeting. The first is whether you have more than one security camera. And indeed, one at every entrance and exit, and then we have to talk about the number of days. So the first is, uh, it seems to me that it's, doesn't make a lot of sense to have the security cameras not at every entrance and exit, especially if they're not being monitored all the time. The, the purpose of security cameras is to, to, without people, without actual people there, is to have, um, a, a recordable and viewable record of going inns and outs and activities around the securities camera. So I think the police's request here is, is reasonable. So discussion from anybody else, and then we'll ask for the, uh, comments from the applicant. Any other members have an alternate view? Mr. Reed or Mr. White, are you good with, um, you're good with the police for determining on security, or you're good with the police determining on security cameras?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, generally, you know, as you had said before, we had requested, what we had requested, the police, including the chief, reviewed it, came back with their suggestions, I think, A through D of their suggestions are acceptable to us. I mean, the way that they presented it, um, is this, these are acceptable conditions, uh, to the applicant.
So that's the camera at each door, just like clarify, camera at each door.
Camera at each door.
Got it, okay.
Regular check-ins, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, the, the other parts aren't controversial at all. I think the immediate, the, um, immediate question before us is more than one camera per building at each entrance and exit. And there's no discussion from members of the board on that. Oh. Ms. Marshall, you had discussed this last time a little bit about the value of security cameras with the not being, um, live monitored.
Yeah, no, no, that's, I did, but that's not my concern. I just wonder if, um, if it's the case that, whether it should be stated that these are at doors, um, through which tenants and gets, guests may enter or exit. I mean, in case there are some external doors that are just storage rooms, or, I, I don't know, get.
I think, I think the purpose.
Those should also be.
No, maybe, but I, I think the purpose, the meaning of this, when you look at it, is each door entrance and door exit. And I don't, I think the purpose of the, of this is tenant and management entrance, not into storage, and we can make that clear in the notes to the, um, of, of the meeting, in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
But I think you have a good point. There's no reason, I, I don't think there's reason to have a security camera over a, a storage closet, to the most part. Other questions? All right, and the last one is the number of days. Um, I was pretty hardcore on keeping seven days. I, um, I still think that makes sense. Um, I think the commit, the, uh, commitment of time and money that it, from the owners, for set for three days is, is not a lot. I did a little bit of work on it. On the low end of the estimates that you provided to us, the thirty-one dollars an hour for eighteen hours, the three days, comes to a total of five hundred and fifty-eight dollars a week. That comes to a total of twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. You have two hundred and nine total units, I think. Is what the, when the building is built, you have two hundred and nine units. And that comes to about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a unit a year, or eleven dollars a month. Average rent in that building is what, Mr. White, fifteen hundred dollars a month? Sixteen?
I don't know the exact number, but somewhere between fifteen hundred, yeah.
And update to two thousand, yeah, fifteen to, yep, fifteen to seventeen hundred. So you're looking at, you know, less than one percent of your total costs for three days. So, and it'd be substantially more for, for, um, seven days. I agree, double that, you know, so it'd be almost a percent of your total rent in a month. I don't think that's outrageous to ask, but I also know that the, I think I heard from board members a pretty strong feeling that three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, was sufficient. I heard that from several board members in the last meeting. Um, I'm not going to force a vote on seven days that, um, I think, even though I think it's a good idea, I'm not gonna force a vote on that unless other people view that as important. But right now, it seems to be a majority for three days at, um, of, of, of six hours apiece. Anybody else have comments on that, um, the number of days of coverage? Mr. Maxwell, Maxfield, I know you said you were at seven and then at five. Are you comfortable with three days?
I'm comfortable with three days. I'm, I'm comfortable with five or seven, I could, I, but I, I, I think my minimum there is definitely, my minimum is, is, is three on there. I know, uh, you know, reading through some of this here. You know, we've got, you know, the, the, the police on board, looks like I, I saw we got a letter from, uh, some residents there on board, but, uh, again, I, 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 I don't really think that the security guard issue is, is as much about safety as I think it is noise and compliance, which again, the residents, um, I think some of the butters who, who've spoken in this meeting, I, I haven't seen the, the signed letter from them saying that they're, they're no longer worried about, uh, noise issues from, from this place, so I'm still on board with the security guard, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm certainly flexible on, on days.
Maureen, I would just add, I noticed that Mr. Nieto, Carlos Nieto, is, is signed in as a panelist. In case there's a chance you may, we may need to refer to him. You may wanna bring him on as a, he was attending, you may wanna bring him on as a panelist. Um, the other thing to, to, for us to note, as to your point, is just we'll go back to the chief of police after now, after today, after our dealing with this. And if he finds a, a need for, uh, a greater number of nights, it could be imposed by the chief of police. So, um, I guess we will, I am comfortable leaving the discretion to the chief of police rather than to us or to the, um, the applicant on the number of days that the, uh, security guard is valuable to have on hand. Any other comments on that from, oh, Ms. Marshall, your hands up?
Yes, but I wanna just mention something about the second bullet before we move, move away from this whole issue. Can I do that now, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I'm wondering what the point of, is of the phrase immediately after the board's approval, since I mean, it's not literally like within hours, so, you know, it would just be deleted, um. You want to, either clarify what it means or get rid of it, but it.
How about it, within two weeks?
Of, but of what? Of, of our taking a vote, or of the permit becoming effective, or?
Well, as it reads.
Yeah.
It's of the board's, it's of the board's approval.
Okay.
So, if, as opposed to having them go over there to the chief of police tonight, if it's approved, right? Uh, how about we say within two weeks? Does that work? Mr. Ma, does that work?
You can just delete all of that and just say that the owner or its management should have regular check-ins. I mean, and then it starts as soon as the decision takes effect.
All right, and regular, yeah, and if it's, if it doesn't happen, you'll hear about it.
That's right. And then I just wanted to comment on the third bullet. Uh, we're setting the days and hours, so that is not something that the police chief would be modifying in the future. Would, it would be set at those times and days. The police chief would have the discretion to decide if it stops after six months, or continues, or, uh, you know, sometime in the future gets reinstated if it's, uh, necessary. But based on the, the previous, uh, criteria of the three days.
Oh, so the police chief doesn't have the authority to review this, and if there's a problem in his, in his judgment, to require more.
Should it say initially?
I, I'm comfortable with the language the way it is. I just wanted to make sure you understood that, that I, I don't think.
I didn't understand that.
Give the chief the ability to add three more days if he wants to. I, I don't think we were trying to have that accomplish that option. Uh, just to keep it going for the three days if the chief decides to do so.
Are you, um, I wonder, number one, is the, are the rest of the board members with three days being permanent without, um, without flexibility for the chief to impose more or less? I will restate that. Are the other members of the board comfortable with having the police chief only be able to, to continue or reduce the number of days? Or do you think the police chief, if you can reduce the number of days, should be able to increase them? And if so, we'd have to change bullet three some way to say that um, on site security shall initially be Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then but could be increased on a determination of the chief of police. Have to have some language to say that. So my first question is to members of the board. Are you comfortable with the weights? Or do you want more flexibility, more authority for the chief of police? Mr. Maxfield?
Oh, yeah, I, I like, I like more flexibility on there.
Ms. Marshall? You have your hand up.
Yeah, um. I, I, I wonder if what is meant, although we may wish to change it, is that for this initial six month period onsite security will be these days and these times. And then after six months, should that be, should it be uh appropriate to modify that? Could go either what, you know, any kind of modification might be needed and allowed. Because this fourth bullet then refers to after, you know, after six months of this onsite security, so the third bullet did specify that it's for the first six months.
Yeah, I think, I see the point you're making, Ms. Marshall. We could, I think that could be written in. It could be amended to, to um clarify that. But I think the threshold question is, do we want to have additional authority to the, to the police chief to increase the number of days after the six months or to eliminate them after six months? Ms. Parks?
Yeah, I, I think if we add onsite security, um, initially shall be provided and then in for uh review the need for increased or decreased onsite security.
Well, you, you know, you, how about this? Instead of modifying that first section in the first sentence in section four, how about modifying the second section? Amherst Chief of Police shall determine whether onsite security is continued, increased, suspended, or reinstated at any time after the initial six month period. So it could be putting the, giving the chief of police the ability to increase the number of days, number of cameras, whatever it is. Rather than us, that will solve, I think that solves Ms. Marshall's problem. I think that solves my concern that wasn't addressed initially. Mr. Maude, does that solve, does that work as a condition? Is there any reason that we can't do that? If we determine that's the policy we want?
Uh, I think you can do that, you know, like, you know, maybe we can finalize the language. I don't know if we.
Yeah, you could.
If we want to try to do it right now, I'm wondering if it should be that the, you know, the, I'm thinking more like the the Amherst Police Chief shall determine onsite, whether onsite security is continued, suspended, or reinstated. And at which hours and days at any time after, you know, try to make it a little simpler to understand what you know, what we're trying to have the police chief look at. So, but I think either way, we get there uh.
Yeah.
And understand what the board is asking for and adding that initial, that initial uh onsite security in the third bullet.
Yep. So I think we can get to where we want to be. It may be a question of just massage of the language and I'm, I trust the staff to do that and we'll delegate the staff to to do that. Um, I'd like to get the comment. The board has talked about this, um, Maureen.
And I just wanted to add a clarifying question for that bullet three and four. That's for onsite security guard? Or a, an actual.
Well, I think that, well, I think it's I don't know that that's right. I think it's for all onsite security, including the cameras, right? Doesn't this include everything? Any, I don't know what else there would be. There's guards, there's cameras, there's.
Well, bullet three says on, well, onsite security shall be provided each Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from nine P M. to three A M. When the new forty seven unit building achieves eighty percent occupancy. So is that I, 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 that implies the guard. Um, I'm sure that the cameras wouldn't, you know, only on for those hours and days.
Yeah, so that is just the guard.
And then the bullet four, the chief, Amherst Chief of Police may determine whether on, onsite security is increased uh is continued, increased, suspended, or reinstated. And, and then perhaps um, for um, massage that a little bit uh to include adjustments of hours or, or something like that. At any time after the initial six month period, the applicant shall notify inspection services anytime there is a change to the onsite security service. And so guard and cameras, uh, or i- is this, is this just related to the onsite security guard?
Well, I think we are, we have security cameras already. It could be increased. Um, I see. I see what you're, the point you're making. I think we're, I, I think one way to do that is onsite's guards initially shall be provided. That says we have a security guard and the chief of police onsite security guard and then onsite security by itself in the second phrase, which is more encompassing. So the first place, we're just, section three, we're just talking about the guards and a number of hours. Section three, the four is review of all onsite security. You may say, you know, we don't, we don't need, you don't need guards if you put up four more security cameras, right? He may say that. And I think you would want, I think the applicant would want that flexibility. If there's ways that they, they can, he can address it, I think you'd want to give the chief of police the ability to have as much flexibility as possible. But I don't want to overly complicate this. We're looking, the, the real question is the security guards in three, we ought to make that clear. And what I think the last point is that you have the chief of police look at all of this. Is the security plan good? And if it's not, you figure it out with the chief of police. And I think that's where we're at for it. So I guess what I would suggest, Maureen, is in the first instance, make that specific to security guards. And so in the third bullet point, make that secured, specific to security guards. And then the fourth bullet point, make that specific to all onsite security, which includes security guards, cameras, whatever, you know, door locks, whatever it is. But that's a more, you see what I mean? And I think that makes sense. That's the way to do it. I'd like to get reaction from the applicant to those proposed changes, the kind of amorphous idea that we thrust upon you here, but I think you kind of get where we're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I think from, from our perspective, as long as increase is balanced by decrease and, and modified, you know, as long as there's a, not a suggestion that there's only one path for the police chief to take, right? I think. Let, let, I think totally on the same page, right? So then it puts it in the applicant's court to make sure that it's a safe place. Um, my only concern, and this might just be kind of an intellectual exercise more than anything, is what's our right of redress? Is it, is it coming back to the board, right? So if the, if the police chief, it's not Chief Livingstone, it's somebody else and they just come in and say, this is what you have to do. And we say, but why? You know, and it's just, it's a question maybe for Rob more than anybody. Is that just a, you know, uh modification to the special permit to eliminate or modify this condition, saying X, Y, Z? Here's why. So that, that's our right of redress, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Maude?
Yeah, there's that in, in a unlikely case, it would be under appeal. So if, uh, you know, if the police chief was asking for something, the applicant wasn't doing it as a conditional permit, I would order the owner to do so. Then we come back to that. Then the applicant would appeal to the Z B A and explain why they felt that wasn't proper or the amendment.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, like you said, no problem, we're on board, just massage that language. So like, if it's increased, let's make sure decreases in there, modify however you want to put it.
Okay, so I think we have, I sense consensus around this amongst the board members. Um, and just to restate it, bullet one remains the same, which is each door and entrance and exit. Number two, um, just flat out says you gotta amend this, bullet two to amend this to say uh, the owner shall have regular check-ins. Number three, onsite security, onsite, initially onsite security guard shall be provided. Bullet four, um, onsite security writ large, and it's the chief of police shall and then the language will be modified by staff to allow the chief to increase or decrease onsite security requirements. And if, unless there's any objection, I would like to have that be approved and we'll vote on it as part of the whole package. All right, but that's with direction to staff to a, address that language. Okay? All right, no objection. Seventy six deals with the community garden. I, you didn't come back, the applicant didn't come back with any changes suggested to this, so this seems to me that um, and I think from the last meeting, they were uh comfortable with this, so I'd like to approve this unless there's any questions from members of the, of the um, board. All right, consider that approved without objection. Um, seventy seven is uh all residents on the premises shall have access to the two community rooms. I think you got to figure out how that's going to work with door locks and access, but but you didn't have any objection to that. I think we should consider that um, approval. Unless there's any objection. And um, the last is sort of technical, the last two are technical. Um, before the issuance of the building permit, applicants shall submit an updated L C four O two drainage utilities plan. You're going to have to do that, right? And seventy nine is the approved management plan shall be followed by the applicant. Any changes, so return to the zoning board. So I'd like to consider, I'd like to consider seventy eight, seventy nine, seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine as all approved. And we'll vote on them back. We have a couple other conditions that we have to vote on. I think condition two is the standard um condition that says you got to build it by the proposed um, or by the submitted plans. And that has not been approved so far. I don't think there's been an additional plan submitted since last meetings. I think this list of plans is accurate, is it not, Maureen? This should work.
Yes, this is the mo-, um, what's listed there is what most updated.
Okay. All right, so on that, in case there was additional plan that came up, so I'd like to consider this approved. Um, unless there's any objection, and again, all that will be voted on. And I think that's the last of them, isn't it? You know, I think we've hit all of that.
I believe so. I believe you have reviewed all the um, conditions.
Conditions. All right, the last thing that are there any other conditions board members wish to propose or discuss at this time? Okay, so what we have is, um, I would entertain a motion the conditions one through seventy nine as contained in the um, project application December twelfth, twenty twenty two with modification discussed in the meeting and with the staff's ability to uh frame the language. Maureen?
I, I suggest that you hold off uh making a motion to vote on these conditions until after you go through all your findings and are ready to make your final vote on this application, just in case uh something pops up that perhaps one or all of us have forgotten about and you would want to add another condition to it or modify a condition.
Yeah, um, in general, I like to have the conditions set to make my, to make my um make my decisions, my uh determinations and findings I have to make. So I, I, I understand. Maureen, I, I do. That's the case. Um, but I am not, I, I think you have been in this, uh, Rob had been in these more often than I have, and I will uh defer to your um, suggestion, especially on this meeting. I'll defer to your suggestion that we hold off on the, until uh wait, Ron, it wants to be modified. Uh, Ms. Marshall?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, your sound is breaking up, at least for me. I don't know if there's anything you can do about it. It's getting it's getting more brokenness.
Well, you know what I can, what I can do is try to take off these damn, I hope my family gets me some new headphones. That's what I hope. That's what I hope.
That's part of the official, yeah, official meeting. All right, thank you.
All right, uh, can you hear me now? Good, all right. So the first condition, first determination we have to make, finding we have to make is nine point two two. Nine point two two, um, I think we'll find that on page. Let me just find it.
Uh, it should be uh page twenty six.
Increase your volume now, hold on. There we go. Page twenty six, is that what you said, Maureen? All right, nine point two two, the important part of nine point two two is that it gives us the authority to authorize under special permit a nonconforming use of a building structure or land to be extended or a nonconforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged, or reconstructed, provided that the authority finds such alteration, enlargement, reconstruction shall not substantially be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use or nonconforming building. In this case, that really deals with the um lot coverage from thirty one percent under the original to thirty two point thirty five point two, and I think that should be thirty five point three here, and as it reads here, it should be thirty five point three. Uh, thirty five point three. And we have to make a finding that we not find that that increase in lot coverage will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than um the existing nonconforming use or nonconforming building. So I'm I move that we make that finding. Is there any discussion? Is there a section to that motion? Mr. Maxfield's, Maxfield seconds it? Is there any, any discussion regarding that motion to make that finding? I guess I would just make sure that that's the finding we have to make and we don't have to make any findings for parking. Do you, Maureen?
No, you don't.
Okay, cool. There's no discussion. Roll call vote on the finding of nine point two two. Chair votes aye. Mr. Max, Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Next, we have to make a series of findings under ten point three eight. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three. I'm gonna read through these all. We'll make a decision at the end on, have a vote on ten point three eight. Total as opposed to voting on each one. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one are not applicable. Ten point three eight two, three, four, five, and seven deal with nuisance, vibration, water pollution, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights. Generally, it deals, all these deal with disturbance in the, in the community. Lights or visual structures that are objectionable and convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic through the um property. Um, I think that the, my view is that the applicant, that a lot of this was already taken care of in the first application, the changes that they make increase the likelihood that all this is being done, including the additional security. But also, I think there's an argument to be made that the prop, that the playground is more um, is safer where it is than where it was going to be. I think there's other changes that may, as well as bike locks will, more bike racks will make the place less likely for for theft in other areas. So I think that we can make the case that the um, the applicant is in um So I think that we can make the case that the, um, the applicant is in, um, has indeed met the, uh, the needs, the requirements of ten point three eight two, eight, three, eight, five and eight, seven. Ten point three eight four deals with appropriate facilities provided for the proper operation. Utilities are already there. So I think that finding can be made. Ten point three eight six deals with parking signs. Um, Maureen, I, Maureen, I think we're in, with, they've done this, the board should make a finding that the applicant's proposal to substitute twenty percent of the standard parking spaces for the six proposed compact spaces in the thirty space parking lot. That's something we took care of in one of the conditions already, did we not?
Uh, I, yes, you have ma- made a condition relative to this, yes.
Yep. And so in that case, we have, I think we've met the requirements under ten point three eight six. Uh, ten point three eight seven, uh, I think safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic is found on site. We didn't see anything that, and nothing, the new building makes that less likely. Ten point three eight eight, three eight nine, three eight nine, nine, eight, nine, three eight nine zero, nine one are all not applicable. Ten point three nine three, uh, lighting is not applicable. Three nine four deals with, um, wetlands and steep slopes, excuse me, steep slopes is not applicable. Um, ten point three nine six is not applicable. Ten point three nine seven deals with adequate recreational facilities. I think that the, the, um, additional playground, um, picnic tables, grill stations and others that the, uh, conditions are part of conditions that we made and that they have, they have proposed do provide, uh, adequate recreational open space and amenities for proposed use. Any discussion? And then ten point three nine eight is the proposal is in master harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw and the goal of the master plan. Uh, the use was previously approved by the board and needs to determine whether, the board needs to determine whether the proposed modifications to condition one, six, eleven, twelve, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, among possible others, as they relate to the proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities. Meet sections nine point two two, they do, meet sections ten point three three and ten point three eight. We think they do, and we think they meet the goals of the master plan. I, I think we can make those findings. So I'd like to have a vote on the ten point three findings, uh, and that we make those, uh, like, Ms. Marshall.
Did you mention three nine two? I just didn't hear it. I mean, I don't have any.
Oh, that's, you know, you know, uh, plant, you're right. I skipped three nine two. I didn't have a note on my, good catch. Three nine two deals with landscaping and, um, they're providing additional landscaping and indeed changing trees in order to, um, accommodate the snow and the ice and the salt and everything else. So I think they, they meet the, um, requirements of ten point three nine two. So I would entertain a motion that the conditions under nine point two, uh, under ten point three eight and ten point three nine, uh, have been met, that we have identified.
So moved.
Second.
A second.
So we have a second from Ms. Parks movement. Um, Ms. Parks makes a motion. Ms. Marshall seconds it. Any discussion? Roll call vote. All those in favor of it signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Aye. So we've made the findings on, um, both nine point two two and ten point three eight and ten point three eight and ten point nine. Uh, now we have the conditions that we have to vote on, uh, imposed upon this application. Those conditions are one through seventy-nine. Um, they include, um, authorizing the changes that we discussed, authorizing the staff to, um, make those changes in accordance with our discussion and, um, I would entertain a motion to, to approve those conditions. Mr. Maxfield, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Parks seconds the motion. Any discussion from board members? All right. I think it's clear that we all, we are giving the staff also authority to make technical and conforming changes if they find anything, uh, minor that they have to do to these, to conform to our, um, stated desires and the, the approved findings and conditions. If there's no further discussion, um, I'd like to, this is a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
If unanimous vote, uh, the conditions are approved. The last vote occurs on the motion to, uh, on a motion to approve the special permit, application to modify the special permit. Requesting a special permit, I'm going to get this right because we've had, spent a long time doing this. So I don't want to screw up the last motion. So the motion is request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit. Twenty twenty-eight, twenty eighteen dash twenty-one for proposed modifications to conditions one, six, eleven, twelve, nineteen, condition four, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, among possible others, as they relate to proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities, building plans, management plans under ten, ten point three three and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Do I have a, uh, motion?
So moved.
Ms. Parks was first to the gate on this one. Is it, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maxfield comes in second. Um, any discussion? All right. No discussion. The vote occurs on this. We require four votes for approval of this. Um, the chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Special permit is approved. Um, congratulations and thank you for your patience and for working with us on this over these last four months.
Well, thank, thank each of you. Um, I know there's been a lot of time and consideration for this project. And so thanks again for, um, for all your, your work and all your time and look forward to working with the town to, to build the project.
Thanks and, and great job, Maureen. Well, we're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. It's, it's been great working, uh, with you and, uh, and, and with the Z B A, of course, and Rob, of course, and Maura, um, through, through the years. So, yeah, um, it's been fun.
We'll see you around, I'm sure.
The next order of business. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Tom. Uh, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
All right. Um, the next order of business is public comment on, and Rob, stick around here. Don't leave yet. Uh, public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. I see there's no attendees, no hands raised. Um, the last order is any business, uh, not, not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours. I'm going to say that Maureen leaving is the business that was not anticipated in the last four, uh, forty-eight hours. Um, not anticipated and not welcome. But I would say that I am really, I am, I, now look, I'm not happy that you're leaving, Maureen. You know that. I really liked working with you. I think you did us a really good, you did a great job for us. You were a pleasure to work with. You worked really, really hard. You did a great job preparing us, me, and I know the rest of, of the members. Um, I think you really, really contributed to this town over the last several years and I liked working with you. I also know that you've given a great opportunity to go someplace and be in a leadership role. That's important as well. And so I'm really proud, I'm proud of you, I'm proud for you and I'm happy for you. Um, and thank you all for what you've done over the last several years working with us. It really, we couldn't have done it without you. That's, and I really mean that. We couldn't have done it without you. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's been my pleasure working with you guys and I'm just a few towns away. So you can come find me or, you know, I'll, I'll be stopping in in Amherst and there's, um, and not as a worker, but as a visitor. So I'm, I'm, I'm around.
I hope we, I hope we see you at Amherst Coffee or out in front of, uh, uh, Freshside because that is your, um, I don't know what happened to your background. It's gone.
They took them down. So I took the, my screen down as well. Yeah. But those should be back up in the spring, I hope.
Rob, you and Chris are going to have big shoes to fill and a big job to try to find somebody to do this, uh, to work this hard. Uh, I hope you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I hope you're able to get, otherwise you and Chris are going to be spending a lot of time with us and I don't, may not want that. No comment. All right. Um, again, Maureen, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes. You're here. Yeah. Thank you, Maureen.
Um, if there's no other new business, I'd entertain, uh, Mr. Maxfield.
I just had a quick one here. Um, I know when we did, it was now six months ago, when we did, uh, election for, for chair, vice chair, clerk and all that. Wanted to put, put out that stipulation of if, uh, I could perhaps step down early, if anybody else on the board would be looking for a chance to do that. Read about that. It didn't sound like there was a, a whole lot of enthusiasm. So I didn't think necessarily three months, but, uh, John, what are you, uh, what is your thought? I thought you might be another candidate who might want to, uh, get some time in as vice chairman. Where, uh, where are you feeling on that right now?
Uh, Dylan, I appreciate the offer. I will say that, um, I am pretty tight on time, uh, with a full-time job and, uh, some teaching and consulting work on the side. So just for the sanctity of, um, not having to continually pull someone else into that role, I'm going to actually defer that, but I appreciate it. If, if, uh, if my schedule wasn't what it was right now, um, I think that would be a good fit. So thank, thank you for the thought.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dylan.
Well, that's, that's all I've got. Then I'll, I'll just say, yeah, uh, just going to reiterate, but I think we're all going to take a turn staying here, Maureen. Yeah, we're all, we're all really going to miss you. Montague was lucky to get you, but man, we are, we are sad to lose you and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely, once we get somebody permanent here, I promise to, to give them a good hazing. So.
Good old Z B A hazing.
Hey, well, when Maureen was here, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, definitely. Yes, yes.
Maureen, who will be filling your role? Who are we going to be working with from this point forward here on the Z B A?
Uh, that's.
Is that TBD?
Yeah, I mean, short, short term, it's going to be Chris and I.
Okay. You guys ready to fill those shoes?
Couldn't even try.
Yeah. Maureen, you will certainly be missed. Um, you work, you know, i- i- the short time that I've, uh, you know, I've been here, of course. Um, your work's been, been really helpful in getting, you know, myself set up, which therefore, um, you know, also means the rest of the board. You're extremely thorough. It's been really great having you, you know, prepare these reports, make them very clear and easy to understand. You know, hand them out to us if we're on site visit, drop them off in the mailbox. If, uh, if we aren't, you've been doing, you know, some, some really helpful work. And, um, you know, really appreciate, yeah, your, your, your assistance and your service so far. Um, wishing you the best in Montague. And, uh, you know, I'll hopefully bump into you at the book mill sometime.
Right.
Yeah.
Grabbing a glass of wine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are, are you moving out there? I take it you are?
Uh, I get that question a lot. One step at a time, one step at a time. I haven't started yet. I haven't started yet, but maybe.
You are in Amherst right now, right?
Uh, no, I live, uh, over the river. I live in Northampton.
Oh, I thought you were, okay. I thought you were more local here. Got it.
You may take that other bridge then.
Right. Well, good luck to you in the transition.
Thank you.
All right, folks. And again, thanks, Maureen. Good luck.
Thanks.
Yes.
Um, if there's no other business, uh, motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. No discussion on this motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Um, I have to do my roll call. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all. Happy holidays.
Thanks.
Bye.
Good luck, Maureen.
Bye-bye. Thank you.